Good evening, everyone. Good evening and welcome to our March 31st School Board Meeting. Sarah, if you could establish a quorum, please.
Andy Burns.
Here.
Kim Martin.
Here.
Stephanie Moran.
Here.
Mick Sauter.
Here.
Greg Spradling.
Here.
Bree Stanky. Nancy Stubbs.
Here.
Sophie Yonlin.
Here.
And Bree has an excused absence. We have an exciting agenda tonight. We're looking forward to celebrating our fine arts. First, if we could look at the agenda. Are there any items that board members or members of the public want to prove? Pull from the agenda. And then if we could also take a look specifically at the consent agenda. To see if there are items there that board members want to pull. On the superintendent's consent agenda, we have the Human Resources Report, the Student Services Action Report, the financial statements through February 28th, the Durango Education Center MOU on the board's consent agenda, the public participation process. And Nick had moved that from the agenda to the consent agenda because there wasn't a whole lot of discussion about it last week. The review indicators OE7, and then approval of several minutes. Any items that board members want to pull from the consent agenda or move from the regular agenda?
President Burns, I'd like to move 10A to next session, please.
So moving 10A would move our discussion about BCO5. And I believe Stephanie just wants us to make sure that we've got enough information and a chance to review it. I didn't get updated action plans out until today. So I think that's a wise decision. So Stephanie and Dan, that would come on on our February, April 13th to 14th meeting. Any other items? Hearing none, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I still move.
Second.
Sarah?
Andy Burns.
Hi.
Kim Martin.
Hi.
Stephanie Moran.
Hi.
Mick Sauter.
Hi.
Greg Spradling.
Hi.
Nancy Stubbs.
Hi.
If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As I started, we're excited. There's such a large turnout tonight. We've got a busy agenda. And March is Youth Art Month. So we're excited to highlight our student artists and then our musicians as well. So in March, each school in the district selects one piece of art to present to the Board of Education in celebration of Youth Art Month. Each student will be asked to come up here and explain their artwork and formally present their piece to a board member. We'll have the corresponding board member come up, hold the piece of art, and pick up a certificate from Sarah that we're going to give to the students. We'll then have the students go over, along with a board member, to the Youth Art Month's display area and then hang the artwork on the board there. Students, we also have a gift for you. And we'll have you come over here and get a gift afterwards and get a photo with all of the students together. So we're excited about it. And the students' artwork will be framed, titled, and put on display here for the year. And you're welcome to come in and look at it at any point. So we're really excited. And it's neat to see the great work of our students.
Andy, we do have a performance for the Star Spangled Banner.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Addie Bergenheyer from Escalante Middle School will perform the Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we held at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I apologize for that. So now we can play ball. Great, if we could start with our elementary schools. We'll have Anus Valley with teacher Shannon Cruz and Callan Bernhardt in Griffin Hall come on up. If our board member from Anus Hall...
Okay, so this is our dragon that we have drawn. And it's called the Chinese Dragon.
Great, great, great. So students will hang it up on the back wall there and then come by and get a certificate from Sarah. And then we'll have you over here for a group photo afterwards. So students are going to get your certificate and then hang out over here. So we could have Florida Mesa teacher Jennifer Smith and student Kenna Petzschek.
Hi, my name is Kenna Petzschek. And I am showing my painting today. And we were doing a... a landfill. And we had a few bad things go around the few turns. We were doing some egg paint. And unfortunately, it rotted over the weekend. And so we did a different kind of paint. So I did a problem solver. I used a... I used a... I used acrylic paint. And that's what made my sky really red and made it pop out. For what I decided to do with the sky was make it where the mountains would pop out. It would be a mountain with my Sharpie. We needed it pop out more. And made the mountain and the water.
So we have a certificate for you. And then if you want to join our fellow artists over there. Fort Lewis Mesa with teacher Christine Trout and student Madeline Nappier.
I am Maddie Neifer. And I am in the 5th grade at Fort Lewis Mesa Elementary School. In 5th grade, we study American history. In art, we studied the work of Jasper Johns. My artwork is inspired by American modern artist Jasper Johns. Mr. Johns painted the American flag in 1955. We learned in art that his flag has 48 stars because in 1955, there were only 48 states. Alaska and Hawaii joined in 1959. We discussed that the 13 stripes represent 13 original colonies. The colors on the flag were chosen for the meanings. Red for courage, blue for pride, and white for purity. I did a collage behind the drawing of just the flag like Jasper Johns. Mr. Johns used newspaper, but I used the words of the Star Spangled Banner and the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is done in oil pastels.
Needham Elementary School with teachers Karen Patrum, Paula Mateus, and student Ray Sandoval.
First of all, I just wanted to thank everybody for being here tonight and supporting the arts. It's so important to have art in each of our schools. It benefits our kids in so many different ways. Not only making them creative thinkers and problem solvers, but it also assists them in decision-making in other areas of their lives. So art is such a wonderful thing for our students. And students like this have done such a great job. And thank you all for your support and for being here to honor them. So thank you, Naya. Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Ray.
Hi, my name is Rady Zellomarx, Sandoval Perez. My school's name is New Malamontary. And my art teachers are Ms. Pederman, Ms. Paula. My principal's name is Mr. Tanaka. And the title of my art is O-R-S-P. It stands for my initials. The process I used to create to do this is to do value scales and blend the colors. Then my class outlined the portrait. I love art. Art is my favorite thing in school. So I think this one is my favorite one. Thank you.
We need to grab it high and hang it really high.
That's right.
Grab it. You should hang it really high because the rest of us can't reach it.
Park Elementary School with Marina O'Donnell and student Delia Bong.
Can I hold the mic for you, honey?
Hi, my name is Delia. And I go to Park Elementary and... And my picture's called Where the Wild Things Are. And how I made it is first I drawed landscaping and then I colored it with crayon. And then I painted the crayon with watercolors. And then I made little monster things and cut them out. And then I make myself in the middle.
We don't have a nomination from Riverview, but it's teacher Kate Carr here that we can recognize your hard work.
We have nominees. I'm just laying on the floor. Because we try to do things a little bit differently at Riverview. And we wanted to bring you experience because we know we have lots of new board members this year. And we realized your agenda is very packed. So we could not squeeze ourselves in. So we did it a little bit differently. Our program is more of the creative arts. These beautiful fine arts all around is amazing. But when we have 500 kids at our school, it is very hard to pick one, especially when they are artists across the board. It's not just in our classroom, but out on the ski mountain, at the dance center, in their science classroom. So with further ado, I do have two beautiful artists, Beta and Jude.
I'm Beta Mishkar. And I'm a student of Riverview Elementary.
My name is Jude Kasai. And I'm also a student of Riverview Elementary. And this is the creative cycle that was made by the 4th and 5th graders of Riverview. The creative cycle is a piece of art created by the 4th and 5th graders of Riverview to show the cycle of art.
We made this because, if you think about it, art is like a cycle. Because first, you think of what you want to make. Then you plan. Then you make your planned-out art. Then you reflect and start all over.
We made the creative cycle a circle because a circle never ends. And you always repeat the creative cycle over and over again.
And if you think about it, well, there is a saying saying we are not square, we're circle.
Thank you for letting us present the creative cycle to you.
Sunnyside with teacher Jennifer Smith and student Ethan Jurgen, please.
Hello, my name is Ethan Jurgen. And this is my painting of two famous paintings taken parts of and put together. Some colors were not in the painting, but I added them anyway. And... And that's pretty much it about it.
Mick, it's a good thing you're over six feet tall. Escalante Middle School with Britt Bowman and Lila Trono.
Hi, my name is Lila. And I'm from Escalante Middle School. My art teacher is Ms. Bowman. And my principal is Mr. Arnold. The title of my artwork is The Line is Riot. I created this type of art by cutting out organic and geometric shapes out of paper. We also had to have a balance of positive and negative shapes.
For those of you that... That's in the category of other duties as assigned. Miller Middle School with Carol Good and student Rebecca Bowers.
My name is Rebecca Bowers. I'm a 7th grader at Miller Middle School. My art teacher is Ms. Good. And my principal is Mr. Noon. The title of this is The Bear. Our assignment was to pick an animal that lived in the Durango area for a unit called Predator Prey. And I chose a bear because bears kind of represent the outdoors and the wilderness to me. And one of the things I love about living here is being able to go out into the wilderness and be in the outdoors. So we started off by choosing a photo that we liked of our animal. And we folded it into a grid shape. And then we did the same with a bigger piece of paper and transferred that photo onto our bigger piece of paper. After that, we colored it in. And I used colored pencil for my bear. And once that was done, we did our background. We also based our background off of a photo we chose. And once that was done, we glued our bear onto our background. And we added other things in nature. Like I added the rocks and the bush that the bear was standing on. And that's it. Thanks.
Durango High School with teacher Roxy Mitchell and student Jane Zuccalillo.
Hi, my name's Jane Zuccalillo. I'm a senior at Durango High School. My photography teacher is Roxanne Mitchell. And my principal is Leanne Garcia. This is my artwork. It's titled Engineer. I didn't take it for any particular photo assignment. This semester, I'm working mostly on expanding my photography skills and discovering what I like to do best. So this is just one of my pieces.
Big Picture with Elise Hansen and Anna Lurma Martine Del Campo, please.
Hi, everyone. My name is Anna Laura Lurma. I am currently a student at Durango Big Picture High School. I'm so excited to be able to have this opportunity to present to you my artwork. But before we continue on, I want to introduce to you my amazing school principal, Alan Henry, and my beautiful art teacher, Elise Hansen. So the title of my artwork... So the title of my artwork is Dreamcatcher. I honestly just wanted to keep it short and simple. Not too long ago, Elise, my art teacher, told her students, including me, that we had to create a piece of art that would involve mixed media and a CD. After brainstorming ideas and looking for inspiration, I came to the conclusion that I wanted to make a dreamcatcher. So many people thought that I would use the whole CD to create the big circular figure. But I actually decided to make the feathers out of CD and also cover the circumference of the circular... of the circle with tiny pieces of CD that was... Broken up. I also used Sharpie to outline the lines and also beads of different colors. And also same color. To make this piece look kind of 3D-ish. I also decided to add a hint of yellow to make it look vintage and make it pop out more. The meaning of it may be different to each individual depending on their perspectives and beliefs. But to me, it means multiple things. I see a dreamcatcher as a person. It's so simple. It looks so simple, but it's so complex at the same time. If you pay close attention to the details of this artwork, you will see that there are lines and shapes, different sizes, and also different colors. I feel like human beings, we are made of thick and thin lines. We are also made up of nightmares and dreams and goals we want to reach. Also, to me, I've searched or I've done research that if you have a nightmare, the weaving of the dreamcatcher catches those nightmares. And with the ray of sunlight or in the morning, they disappear. And I feel like that ray of sunshine is our wisdom. And it also eliminates the negative energy. It brings the good vibes. And so that's how we are. I feel like this is a person. Maybe not literally, but in a artistic way. And I hope you guys take that with you. And thank you for presenting.
Addie, our student who sang the Star Spangled Banner is still here. If you could join our students up here, we've got a gift for you as well. So Addie, I hope you're still here. If not, we'll get that gift to you.
We also have, I believe, six sixth graders who were performing in the vestibule before and they're here as well. So if we could bring them up as well.
Wonderful. Our students who sang outside could join us, um, as well. So we appreciate that. Let's give them a round of applause.
While we take the picture, if I can also recognize Evelyn Black, our music teacher from Escalante Middle School who arranged our musicians tonight.
Well, we have a wall. I would just like to say to the board, thank you for supporting arts and music and drama and theater and all of the extra special things that you support for our schools. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are, can be released.
There are some cookies out in the lobby. We encourage our students to help themselves. Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot. We appreciate it. We'll move on to item seven, communicating with the board. Uh, the 2016, 17, and 2018, um, academic calendar discussion. Over the last couple of weeks, we've asked the superintendent to bring forth a calendar that would highlight the academic options for the next two years. Uh, Fort Lewis College has asked upon kind of early notification so that, uh, they can align the spring break in the future. Dan, if we could-- try.
We will give it a shot here. Um, you have some paper copies in front of you. They're also, I believe, attached to the agenda. Um, these are just coming to you tonight. We're not making a decision on the calendar, but we wanted to present to you our current adopted calendar transferred over to 16 and 17 and 17 and 18. Um, you'll notice that, that the winter holidays are, are quite interesting on both of them. And so certainly probably need more discussion, but I know one of the things that we'd like to be able to do is agree upon spring break so that we can pass that on to our partners up at Fort Lewis and hopefully give them some guidance as they set their next academic calendars. But I'm open to however you'd like to proceed. These are definitely not the only options, but we thought we'd let you see what our current calendar structure would look like over the next two years, uh, to at least start some conversations, so.
Questions for Dan?
We'll have other opportunities.
Yeah, the, the, the spring break, um, we, we've tried to make spring break fall in the middle or at the end of the nine-week period. Um, and I know that Fort Lewis would like her earlier. The only way to do that would be to split the nine weeks and actually have them go off on a week and then come back and finish their nine weeks, which is probably not ideal. And that's why--
If we could ask individuals to take conversations out in the hallway, please. Thank you. Sorry.
That's all right.
It's exciting to use it for the first time.
I think that was the first time it was used. So anyways, um, so again, trying to balance the quarters, um, that, you know, I looked at a number of different options. Um, I, like I said, I think the calendars, um, uh, do they maintain the 175 days as we've discussed? They do increase to nine workdays, which is what we did. Next year's calendar was nine teacher workdays instead of eight. Um, and that, that maintains them. 17, 18 says 11, it's nine. We just forgot to change that number, um, as we moved, uh, from one to the next. So, um, again, um, you'll see the same concepts of a day off in between each nine weeks. You'll see spring break between the third and the fourth nine weeks. You'll see school ending the week after Memorial Day. The only way to have it end prior to Memorial Day is by starting mid-August, which gets rather warm in our classrooms. So again, open to other thoughts and ideas. I think what would be nice would be to maybe come to some agreement on spring break so that we can pass that on to our partners and then bring this back for continued discussion at another meeting.
I know the perspective from Fort Lewis is just trying to get a sense of where nine R will land on the spring break. Uh, they've publicly stated that they're willing to live with that fourth week. Wherever we land, giving them advance notice so that they can build their schedule, I think they're fine with. I think they'd prefer the third week, but they could certainly live with the fourth week. So it's just getting out in front of them is, uh, their primary request. Questions or comments from board members?
Just looking at, uh, winter break-- winter holiday--
Yeah.
Trying to be politically correct.
Right.
Why couldn't you on the 18th, 17, 18 just move, break up from the 18th through the 29th and start, you give the first off, but start school then on the second--
On Tuesday. We could certainly do that. I, I've been--
In that way, it keeps it consistent with these other ones.
Both in, or both start the holiday pretty close to Christmas, um, and so travel becomes a challenge. That's what we hear consistently from our families in Thanksgiving week, that getting out of Durango, if you're flying or, or traveling somewhere, that, that week off gives them that time. I'm, I'm concerned that if we, if we don't give off earlier, especially in the 17, 18 option, that, that we're going to be putting families in a pretty challenging position. I have been in districts that have started their break on Wednesday and ended it on Wednesday, so that would be another option. It just doesn't provide the three weekends. It provides two weekends and, and the days either side. So that certainly is an option that, uh, it, it, every now and then you get these years that fall like this and of course, the two we're looking at are, happen to be those two years, so.
I think as far as spring break, it looks fine. I think we have time to talk about the winter break later and hash that over, but spring break is pretty consistent and looks reasonable.
Any other comments? Dan, a couple of comments from me. I think you and I discussed this over the phone. Um, thinking about park and I think park would be during the first three weeks of March. Um, there's a lot of studies out there that accidents go up right after the time changes when people spring forward. And I would imagine that test performance or just menial tasks even might take a hit. So just trying to think about park as it relates to the timing. I think, uh, the time change happened on a Saturday and then students might've been testing as early as that Tuesday.
Tuesday, correct.
And some of the research, I think, says that those impacts could last as much as three or four days. So not that that has an impact on the calendar per se, but just thinking about when we start and stop park associated with that.
I think as we continue to build our infrastructure and build labs, um, that's been our biggest challenge is just making sure that we have the infrastructure necessary to get kids through on a shorter timeframe. Um, it took us all three weeks, um, in several buildings, several buildings. We had to add some hardwired labs. Um, so I think as we continue to build our infrastructure, um, and wired labs in our buildings, I think, I think we can shrink that window and I think that's, that's good advice to try to move away from that.
How much actual park testing time takes place during that?
Um, they, in most of our schools, because we have, we went to the mobile computer carts and, and were advised that it's best not to use a mobile cart. Um, we've hardwired some of those mobile carts in a number of our buildings to provide some more hardwired labs. Um, but most of our labs are pretty well-used during the entire three-week period right now.
I, I guess my question was, you know, how many hours of testing actually takes place during the parks?
There, there is a window for park that, um, you cannot stop until every student's finished. There's no longer, we used to have extended time that was granted to students who needed accommodations. Park allows really extended time for any student that chooses to take it. And so the window becomes larger even though students may finish early. So you can't plan until students actually say, "I'm done." So that, that's a complication of park is, is it, it's not a 50-minute section like TCAP used to be. They, they have up to 80 or 90 minutes and--
Okay.
Most students are finishing early.
All right, thank you. Since, uh, Fort Lewis reached out to me because I work up there, um, are board members comfortable with me sharing these? I mean, obviously these are public documents, but I can reach out and proactively share with them, say it hasn't been approved, but this is our current thought process so that they have an opportunity to provide a response. Are people comfortable with that? And then one other item that I agree with Nancy, we can get into some of the details down the road. Um, I know some board members, including myself and Bree, have expressed an interest in maybe migrating towards 177, 180. I forget how all board members feel about that. So I don't know if this would lock us into 175 for the next two years or that's something that we could, uh, address in coming meetings. And really the importance now is identifying to Fort Lewis when our spring break is going to be.
Yeah, I, actually one of the calendars looked like it gave us 176 days, so I was rather excited and then I recounted and found it wasn't.
Great, anything else? Steph, I'm sorry, um, Sobi, from your perspective, um, any thoughts on this calendar? Sobi?
Um, I think it looks pretty good. I like the consistency throughout it and I know that a lot of the students really like that consistent thought, like they know when something will be coming up. Yeah, it looks pretty good.
Moving on to 7B, the district property update. Dan?
Yes, um, as you know, we, um, completed a long-range planning study, um, and the board gave, uh, me some direction. Um, we have moved forward and we do have a, a number of, or we have a bid on the property, um, out by Escalante Middle School. Um, it was not a, a bid that we felt was, was appropriate based on the value of the property. We have counter-offered and we are in the midst of negotiations. I guess the one thing I wanted to confirm with the board is that our intent in this half-acre parcel that's now kind of being separated because of the roundabout that needs to be put in by the city, um, is really to mitigate the cost of the road improvements that we know we need to incur if we're going to be annexed and, and provide city services into, um, Escalante. Um, I want to confirm that our, our goal was to ultimately raise the dollars necessary to, to complete those road improvements, which would create a, a net zero impact on the district to get that accomplished. And I believe the counteroffer brings us pretty close to that. So I wanted to confirm that with you. Obviously, we would bring a formal offer to you, uh, once we finish, but I really wanted to make sure that that was accurate thinking on my part and if so, then we'll move forward and probably bring a formal offer to you on the 14th.
Can we give Dan a thumbs up, thumbs down in terms of, kind of as our main objective, just to kind of, at a minimum break even? If we make a little money off of it, great, but that's not our primary objective. Clarifying question?
Yeah. What road were we going to--
This is Baker Lane. This is-- I'm sorry.
The paving.
The paving, the paving is, um, well, on this particular one, this is about Baker Lane. Hermosa Road is the other road that we're still in the midst of, of negotiating with the county and the, and the residents out in Animus Valley.
Okay, I'm just, I was confused because I thought we were going to use the money to help out on Hermosa Lane.
No, no. This particular road, um, for the city to annex, um, Escalante, we have to do curb and gutter and sidewalks. And so the estimated cost there is about 150,000 to 160,000 for the portion that we would retain. And so our goal originally, when we found that piece of property that really became unusable, was if we could liquidate that piece of property, then we could, in essence, pay for those improvements and, and spend no additional tax dollars on those improvements.
Thumbs up in terms of moving ahead, um, with the notion of breaking even.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, can you give us an update on other, uh, properties? Fanta Park, the Cherry Creek property or out by--
We, we have, um, entered into conversations on a land swap, uh, that would provide us a high school site. Um, we should be able to give you more details on the 14th. Um, so I would imagine we'll have a, a longer session on property. Um, the Fanta Park is one that we, we are also still working on. Um, as we've discussed in the past, neither the city nor the district actually have deed to that and, and we both use it. And so we're really working to clean that up and we have engaged Darryl Farrington, our attorney, um, to help us, um, do that, um, and working closely also with the city. So, um, we should have more detailed updates at that point in time, um, on the 14th to give you an idea of where we are.
Is the city supportive of, kind of, our intent there?
We, we've been discussing this for three years. About one of us needed to take it. Um, right now, in, in the Platts, it actually refers it to us as our land. And so that, that's what we're still in the process of, of going through the process. It's, it's right now, it sits in the name of a defunct organization. Um, and so it really is a matter of, of one of us, um, claiming, quiet claim to it, so.
Any questions for Dan?
Can we become the defunct organization? Can we become the defunct organization? File a 501(c)(3) and it's--
We're hoping just to assume, assume the property in our, in our existing organization's name, so.
You know, better luck, uh, taking your Conestoga wagon out there and sticking your claim. Uh, item 7C, the Casby Days of the Capitol are two dates coming up, April 8th and 15th. I don't believe we've historically, uh, sent individuals to the Day of Capitol. We've typically participated in, uh, the legislative update in February and then just the agenda setting, uh, for, uh, Casby's platform that takes place in the fall months as well. So this would be a new effort. Um, Dan's obviously well-connected in terms of legislative, um, possibilities that could impact the K-12 system. So I think we're going to look to Dan for some guidance or the things that we really should connect with, uh, Jay Paul and, uh, Ellen and other legislators on topics. And if so, do people have time to go up there for one of these events?
Yeah, I, I, there are a number of, of, it, it's definitely a very interesting, um, legislative season. Um, and, and I do believe that there's a lot of value in, in our board having their voice heard. Um, you know, the, the state, certainly the governor sees Durango as, as a leader in so many ways, economic development and, and certainly the work we've done in, as a, a school board. But, um, I do think there's a lot of value if folks are willing to go, um, for us to look at whether it's one of those dates or whether we find a date that could work, that we go up and, and I'd be happy to arrange some meetings with a number of the key legislators on the education subcommittee. Um, Finance Act right now is, is, um, I wouldn't say not promising, but certainly not the 200 million and negative factor buy-down that, that, that was proposed. Um, right now it would be one-time money. And so I think anything that we can do to show our support for public education funding and the assessment bills that are everything from throw everything out, throw the baby out with the bath water to change nothing, um, I think the more we can let our voice be heard, the better. So I certainly would, would work with whoever wanted to go and we'd, we'd arrange time and I'd be happy to go as well. Um, but I do think there's some value in us trying to reach out if it works in the work schedules.
I know I can't go. Is there interest from other board members, um, in going? I guess philosophically, not even looking at our schedules, is something that-- not even looking at our schedules, is something that we support attending as a board. And then we can figure out whether an individual who's able.
Would like to go, but I'm tied up both dates. I got a doctor's appointment.
We, we don't have to lock into those particular days. We certainly, anytime, the session is likely to go right up to the wire. I don't anticipate that anything education-wise is going to pass before probably the last day of the session in May. So, I think there are other opportunities. These are days that CASB orchestrates and organizes together with other board members. But again, I think there, there are some interesting dialogue right now in the, in the House and the Senate that timing could be really important. So, these days may not be the right days, but if there were folks interested in going, I'd be happy to work directly with those of you interested and, and just keep the board in, in the loop on Friday memos as to what's happening and what's being heard. Because there may be specific days of hearings that would be better than either of these days in particular. So, I'd also be open to just knowing if there's interest, if Greg's interested, I'd be happy to work with Greg and see if we can find a day that would be valuable for us to go and then work to do that.
This session ends usually the first week of May, is that right?
First week of May, correct.
Is it the most, is being there in person the most effective way?
Yes.
Okay.
Being able to speak. Certainly, if it's a hearing day and you can testify, that's the most powerful impact, especially from a rural part of the state that's not easy to get to.
Yeah.
When you say, "I'm from Durango and then I've driven all the way up here, I've flown all the way up here," it has a huge impact. So, again, there's a lot that we're going to want to impact. Not quite sure when that will occur. So, it is, it is just a very awkward session.
Okay. What are the dates again? I'm not seeing.
April 8th and 15th.
Those are the CASB dates.
Yeah.
April 9th, so April 7th, the day before the April 8th one is our community forum.
Is that community forum, right.
So, that's a.
We'd have to fly up in the morning.
Uh-huh. And then the other one is April 15th. And we have a board meeting on the 14th.
On the 14th. So, both are similar situations.
The nice thing about working with CASB is they set the agenda and we just kind of follow their template. We can certainly go alone. It's a little more legwork on our end, but usually, if we could testify, that would be great. But then, the legislators usually have afternoon for committee meetings or meeting with constituents. And most of the work takes place in the morning or early afternoon. So, we could probably, with some legwork and some of Dan's networking, build an appropriate schedule.
I would agree. I would agree.
But I'm available on those dates, either of them, if, if, if that's the way you want to go.
And I don't think this opportunity is limited to just one board member. So, the more, the merrier, those dates don't work for me. So, but I think there's.
Why don't I reach out to the chair of both the House and the Senate, this education committees and see if there's particular testimony days that would be wise for us to look at and which probably would not be those days. And, and then I'll include in Friday memo this week what those are and just ask that you get back to me if it's of interest. And then we'll, we'll make arrangements if, if that's something we decide to do.
I do happen to be in Denver, the 11th and 12th for a baseball game.
Okay.
But, you know, maybe I needed to extend it one way or the other.
Okay.
But I don't know if they meet Mondays or Fridays.
They do. They do. Yeah. Yeah, they're in five-day-a-week sessions right now during the.
Go Cubs.
Yeah, they're playing for the Cubs. Great. Well, thanks for that reminder. Public participation and correspondence. I think we've got three individuals. Are there any other individuals that?
Yes.
Great. One person. We'll start with Katie Burford, please, if you don't mind coming up stating your name and address into the record. And all individuals will have three minutes. And Sarah will be our timekeeper. Is Katie here? No, great. Thanks.
Yeah, sorry. I missed being called in class. My name's Katie Burford. I live at 3041 West Third Avenue and, and the owner of Cream Bean Berry Ice Cream. Just wanted to speak, I have two children at Needham. And, uh, wanted to speak briefly from both perspectives. First of all, as a mother, I feel like, you know, I just wanted to, to respond briefly from my perspective about some of the concerns that have been raised about the timeline for the approval of Juniper School, specifically what the rush is. And to this, I can only say, to, to ask that question disregards the most important people in this discussion, which is the students. For them, there's always a rush because they only get one crack at education. And for their families, we need time to plan. And we have, the decision about their education is the most important decision we'll make. And having a year of uncertainty really throws into a little bit of chaos that very important decision for us. So, as far as why the rush, it's because we need to know. We need that certainty. And also because I feel like it is a show of good faith on the part of the district. I feel like as, as an outsider in the process, I haven't been involved at all. But as an outsider, it seems like the organizers have, you know, done three iterations of their application and shown a great willingness to try to bring something that's, something that everybody can agree on. And they wouldn't have gone through it three times if they, if they weren't perseverant. And I feel like it's now time for the district to, to make a show of good faith that they too are invested in this process. And approval, I believe, will be that show of good faith that they're committed and we're not, are not attempting to derail the process through a veil of bureaucracy. So, I feel like for those two reasons, there is a rush. And lastly, just from my perspective, as a business owner, I met, I spent a lot of time tweaking my business plan. But when the day came to open the doors, a lot of it went right out the door. Because you really never know until you're on the ground, doing what you do, what is going to work. And so, we need to get the doors open. Thank you.
Sandy Beilenberg, please, if you could state your name and address into the record. And then you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Sandy Beilenberg. I live at 67 Rio Vista Circle. I'm a former teacher in 9R. I appreciate the online survey that the district has put on the website and your efforts in getting more community feedback. However, I take issue with question nine, which reads, "If you are in sales, you use various measurements to ensure that your sales efforts are improving profit margins so that you can adjust sales strategies to increase yield. Or you have a well-child check at your doctor's office. Your doctor may ask you a number of questions such as, 'What is the color of this bead?' In order to assess your child's progress toward expected milestones to ensure interventions aren't needed. For schools, formative assessments, assessments such as quizzes, discussions, homework, et cetera, provide much of the same data. How important do you consider assessments to be in collecting student achievement, growth, and its school accountability?" Basically, this question has one single answer. Of course, assessment is important. Unlike the other questions on this survey, there's no place for comment. As a former teacher, I assessed my students daily, weekly, and monthly. It's what teachers do. It's what teachers are currently doing in addition to all the state and district mandated tests and product testing of the school vault. This question assumes that our teachers are not adequately assessing their students. Our teachers need to be trusted and respected to be doing their jobs right. Our students are certainly overtested. It's an alphabet soup. PARK, CMAS, DIBELS, SRI, SMI are the tests that the fifth graders alone in this district have to do between now and the end of the school year. Even our school budget emphasizes that our students are overtested. I'm curious why the budget for assessment in the 2011, 2012 school year was $16,662 or $4 per student. It's currently, this year, this school year, $172,978 or $38 per student. It went from $4 a student to $7 a student the following year, 22 the next, and 38 this school year. That needs an explanation or an investigation. How much of the cost of developing the school vault is hidden in this budget? Certainly, the testing corporations haven't raised the cost of their tests that much in the few years that Superintendent Snowberger has been here. I would like an explanation and transparency about this increase in the assessment budget, an update on the vault expenditures, a record of the hours that teachers have put in to the school vault. Our students deserve more than testing. Let's slow down the rollout of school vault, perhaps implementing it only at the secondary level rather than elementary, or with teachers who want to be involved with the permission of parents so that they know exactly how much time their students will be tested. That's all.
Thank you. And last, good. The superintendent did get in touch with you if you'd like to have a follow-up meeting with him. So, we'd be happy to have him reach out to you.
I'd like some of you there.
Great.
Or other people.
Sure.
Thank you.
Lisa Shaw, please.
Good evening, members of the board, superintendent. I'm Lisa Shaw. I live at 1309 East Third Avenue, number 35, Durango, Colorado. Can you hear me okay? Tall. I'm here in support of the Juniper School. As a mother of a five-year-old boy who will be entering kindergarten next fall, I just have concerns about what will be offered to him in the schools. I am a dance teacher of 20 years in the Durango area and so, and a lifelong mover. What appeals to me about the Juniper School curriculum and vision is their active learning environment and their interdisciplinary approach to learning. And that just makes me so happy. I also want to say, it was so fun to be here tonight and see all the young artists. I mean, it just made me so excited. You could see the whole room lit up, the discussion of art. And that just is right near to, near and dear to my heart. But I also think as educators, it's part of our future, the 21st century learning, developing creative minds, creative problem solvers. Movement and dance and music and poetry and literature are all related. Visual arts, that brings us all to life, but it's also vital to our community and our development as intelligent people who can really move into the 21st century. And I think, I just hope that you do approve the Juniper School vision so that we can go forward and bring this exciting school to life. Just a kind of quick anecdote, I grew up in the 80s in Berkeley, California, where in our school district for, for PE, physical education, I actually was able to attend a dance class five days a week. My school had a dance studio with wood floors, with ballet bars and a mirror. And I had a teacher, a fine teacher, who was a graduate of the, of CU Boulder in the dance department there and got a master's there. And that was one of the most inspiring parts of my education because as a person who could not really participate in team sports, I needed a voice, I needed an expression, and I needed a way to participate and plug into my school. And that was it for me. And that it didn't have to just be an extracurricular activity, that it wasn't something that was reserved for after 3 o'clock. That was also part of it. I could be part of the performing arts department, musical theater. But that I could go for my PE every day for 45 minutes and get a dance class from a very qualified instructor really was the inspiration that drove me into my own teaching and having a studio here in town for 20 years. So, I just want to, you know, push that vision forward. I hope that this school can be created and be a new, you know, role, way of teaching in, in education, maybe for the whole district. I just want to say, leave you with this thought that songs are words and rhymes. Words and rhymes are literacy. Poetry is rhythm. Rhythm is music. Dance is rhythm as expressed through the body. And dance and movement are vital to our health and our well-being and our expression. And I really hope that you will support the school in some interdisciplinary approach to learning if we can move into the 21st century with that. Thank you for your time and your support of the school. I appreciate it.
Michelle Hall, please.
Good evening. My name's Michelle Hall. I live at 7960 County Road 203. I have been a teacher for probably a total of 15 years. I was an experiential educator for 10. I've worked for the 9R District for the last three years. And I have three boys in the 9R Schools. One of them is, which was here this evening. And I wanted to second the sentiments of this woman before me, how awesome it was and how exciting to see the kids here and how I am here to support the Juniper School, but also to say, what a great collaboration it would be for 9R Schools to join with Juniper and have them work together to create a choice. My kids have had a great education in the 9R Schools. It's been great. They go to Animas Valley and it's been wonderful. But as an educator myself and having done experiential ed and seeing the effects that it has on certain children, I also have taught kindergarten. And so, watching those kindergartners, some of them fit into the mold of being at public school. It's a very large class. We're not outside very much. They need to move. It'd be really nice for them to have an option and say, "You know what? There's a choice. I can go and I can see a small classroom. I can work at my own level." You know, if I'm a kindergartner reading at a second grade level, I can go up to second grade and read and so on and so forth with all the other math and writing and what have you. So, I think that's very exciting. I just want to support the Juniper School in that it offers a choice in this community. I've had parents express to me, "Wow, this just doesn't fit for me. I wish there was something else." Montessori school is wonderful, but of course, we have to pay for that. And so, it's, it's also a great choice, but not everybody has the opportunity of doing that. So, I think this opens the doors for many, many children. And it'll create a diverse education and a diverse population in that school and give a lot of options. So, thank you for hearing us. And I really do hope that you guys can see it in your hearts to approve this fabulous new option. Thank you.
Robin Richardson, please.
Hi, I'm Robin Richardson. I live at 214 Whistling Horse Trail. I'm a board member for the Juniper School. But more than that, I am a mother of two children and I'm an auntie of a little nephew who's one. So, I'm speaking to you mostly as a parent and a former charter school teacher. I believe that parents in our community should have a choice of where we can send our children to school, depending on many things, including a learning environment that best fits our child's needs. Not all schools are a perfect fit for every child. It is not a one-size-fits-all. Allowing the Juniper School to be a free public choice in our district will not only allow parents to perhaps find a good fit for their child, but it will also allow families that don't have the money to attend a private, costly school to have a choice for an alternative public option. I have taught in a charter school and have seen the positive effects on both the kids that attend and the community. The curriculum developed, the flexible and safe learning environments, the project-based learning, it's, it's a strong school model that has proven very effective, which is why there's an increase in charter schools around our nation. In Colorado alone, there are over 100,000 kids going through kindergarten through 12th in charter school. The professionalism that the Juniper School has demonstrated in working with you as a board is a testament to their vision and the charter school's mission. We want to thank you for working with the Juniper School towards approval and all the work that you've done. I hope that the board tonight approves the Juniper School's application. Thanks.
I think that concludes public participation. Are there any correspondences the board members have received recently that they want to update the group on? 9A, Durango Schools of Choice, the Juniper School Charter Application. These are matters reserved for board action, so we need a motion to discuss any of these topics further, so starting with 9A, the charter application from Juniper School.
You are right.
Depends on which motion you're going to make versus which one I'm going to make.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we approve that the attached resolution providing conditional approval of the charter application dated February 2nd, 2015, from Durango Schools of Choice, now known as the Juniper School, with areas of development and changes as outlined in the resolution be approved.
We need a second. We can open up the conversation at this point. Dan, I don't know if you want to give us an update of progress that's happened in the last two weeks, and I also asked Dan to perhaps speak, while he can't speak on behalf of the committee, any updates from either Nancy or Jackie, as a facilitator, since Pat and Andrea aren't here, just on kind of that progress that's been made and what DAC's take would be two weeks later after that presentation.
Sure. Sure, as you know, on March 10th, we had a formal presentation of the charter. The overarching concern, there were a few areas that obviously needed to be addressed, but the overarching concern was really budget-related. At that point in time, Juniper had asked to open in August of this year, and therefore would have bypassed the charter startup grant, which is available through the state. That's $250,000 that would have been lost in their budget, and obviously, their budget was quite tight, and so we did ask that the budget be addressed. Their request the last meeting to delay their opening until 2016 gives them the opportunity now to secure that startup grant from the Colorado Department of Education, which gives them an infusion of $250,000 to start their budget. There were also some numbers in their budget that we wanted to discuss further, and since you have received an updated budget that outlines both a budget with full enrollment and a contingency budget, which really outlines what if on the October count window, there are students missing. And so we want to make sure that they're sustainable, that's the critical part for us as a district, as a local education agent, that we make sure that they are a sustainable financial organization, and certainly their most recent budget submitted demonstrates. And I'll turn it over to Jackie.
Right. I just want to acknowledge the continued diligent work that the Juniper School Board of Directors has engaged in to address the gaps that the DAC Committee found in their application. With the delay opening by a year, it does give them a chance to use that year to fully put together a robust planning year. The budgetary concerns that were articulated by the DAC have already begun to be addressed in collaboration with 9R. They have met with Dan and me and have had conversations back and forth with Jason to ensure that their figures are accurate and reflect the robust nature of their application. And they've included CD startup grant funds, which they will apply for, be able to apply for, and although they're not guaranteed, they're pretty much a certainty to get, given the fact that their application is in order. It includes money for support of the curriculum model that's outlined in their application, professional development, technology, staffing model. They've provided us with a contingency budget, and in addition, they've identified specific curriculum resources, assessment materials, and technology needs, and these were all addressed in the DAC report as part of the review, as being areas that the Juniper School continue to address. So they've worked with the Colorado League of Charter Schools and have had a friendly review, and they have received feedback and revised their application in accordance with the feedback that they received from the league. They have submitted a letter to you from the Colorado League of Charter Schools, which indicates that the league is quite willing to continue working with them through the development of the school process. And so while I cannot speak on behalf of DAC, they have addressed certainly many of the highlighted areas that were in the review.
And if you were to personally score them, from your professional standpoint, how would you score them now?
Oh, I would say that they're well on their way to meeting the needs of the rubric.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
Yeah, you're putting me on the spot, Andy.
We value your input, so, yeah.
Yeah, and the work that they've been able to accomplish in this short time, I mean, they've been diligent, they've never let down their attack at this application process, and they acknowledge and recognize that we have a financial responsibility to our community, and that that really has been the, that was the big piece of the initial review, was the lack of financial stability over time. And with the Colorado Startup Funds, that makes a world of difference within their budget.
Thanks. Let's just go around the room, but if you don't mind staying there in case we have any clarifying questions.
Sure.
So we'll start with Nancy, since she was on that review process.
I was on the review process, and I attended the, I guess it's called meetings and togethers with two of the board members, and I was impressed that they didn't argue with anything that DAC said. They accepted it, they acknowledged it, they agreed on how to take care of the items. Jackie went through and pulled out, I don't know, quite a few items and said, here are the things that we find outstanding, and they immediately agreed to work on them and to cooperate. I think the big difference between this application and the Animas and Mountain is that they're applying to become part of 9R, and so it's more of a collaboration, it's more of a work together. They won't have as many expenses because of the facilities. Facilities typically are a great part of your budget when you're applying for a charter school, and that does not exist for them. So getting this grant and the money that they have lined up really solves a lot of the money problems. The other problem that was, to me, really stood out with the original DAC report was the timeline. There was no way to really get ready that quickly, even if more things were in line, and they immediately said, let's put it off a year, we'll work on it, we'll do things at the right pace. We are in a hurry, but we're not going to rush. There's a difference between hurrying and rushing, I think. And I was impressed with their attitude, their dedication, which goes to, you know, goes a certain distance, but the rest of it is their knowledge, and their understanding of what they're doing, how they want to do it, and how they will make it happen. I think that's more critical than, passion is nice, but passion doesn't get you the brass ring. Is that a right thing?
It might.
It might. Let's not use that. But anyway, passion is important, but passion doesn't always get you where you want to be. And I think they have the knowledge and the team put together. That's my impression.
You need a good arm. I have a couple of really specific questions. Is this the time to ask them? Okay. So one of the direct purchases from 9R is for special ed services, and I'm wondering, is that per student?
Yes, it'll be based on a per-student cost, and we'll use the same formula that we use with BOSI's.
And so if they, if the school winds up having a higher percentage of special ed students, that could be more costly?
No, not necessarily. We get federal funds for any student identified with a special education need. The costs that are shared that are beyond that are the costs that impact the general budget of the school district to actually provide those support resources for special ed students. Federal dollars do not cover all special education needs, and so those are calculated district-wide, divided by the number of students in the district, and that becomes their portion, because even a student who's not special ed could be reviewed, could be assessed, could be, so it isn't based on the number of special ed students as much as it's based on the number of students in their school. So that figure should be pretty solid, based on the number of students they're projecting.
And then I read the Juniper School is planning on having a lottery-based entrance for students. I really want to know if that's going to be 100% across the board or not. One of my challenges with one of our other charter schools is that they make it clear that they want a certain type of student, and I want to know whether or not every student who applies is going to be in that lottery, and that's how that's going to be decided.
Yes, they're actually going to have a weighted lottery, giving more weight to those subgroups that they have identified as being demographically important to their school community. They're committed to reflecting, my mic went out, they're committed to reflecting the demographics of La Plata County, and so they are, the formula that they created provides that opportunity for them.
That was my follow-up. Let's see, does the board have the sole decision over the teachers that the school hires, their board?
They have, the organization is similar to yours, where they hire their head of school, which is like the superintendent, and then the head of school will hire their staff, and that was clearly articulated within their application process.
Let's see, and I don't know where the Cowboy Church is located. I feel really, I've been, lived here 15 years, and I've lived in Colorado a long time, and why I don't know.
Directly across from Miller, Miller Middle School.
Across from Miller, really?
Yeah.
The title is.
Yeah.
Yes, there's a cowboy statue, actually.
I'm going to have to, oh, I'm thinking Byneathem.
Yeah, it's by Miller. 25th.
Let's see, I think, I think that's it, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'm really, I have to say, I'm really struggling with this. On one hand, I feel, I love the idea of it, I love the enthusiasm, and not just the enthusiasm, but as Nancy says, the really gritty, hard work that this group has done and the dedication to it. I love the idea of choice, an additional choice for our community. So, so part of me, the kind of, you know, part of me just says, yes, of course, but there is this other part of me that worries about what the cost to the rest of the 9R District is going to be, and I'm on the board of 9R, so that's clearly my number-one priority. I see cost coming from the cost to 9R being obvious loss of students that bring money in. I presume there will be some loss of teachers and staff who we've trained and paid for them to become better at what they've done, and, you know, who are we replacing with them, people we haven't trained? So I see that as a worry. I see it as a kind of a, you know, this is such a small community, as we all know, and everybody's asking for money from the same people, basically, for everything. And this is not just another sort of nonprofit asking for dollars, this is an education nonprofit asking for, people who are interested in education. I see that as a flow from, that might otherwise come to 9R, but now goes to Juniper School, which is great for Juniper, but maybe not so great for us. I see also a drain, it's already been a drain. I wonder how many hours Jackie, you, and Jason, for instance, have already spent taking time from 9R work to Juniper work, and I don't know what the future holds for that kind of thing. But these are real concerns for me, and so I wonder, first of all, just a question, how much of the funding for Juniper is, will probably come from the community itself, rather than from state funding or grant funding or other? Do we know that?
I think they don't reflect any soft money in their current budget. It's certainly something they can do, it's something that our schools do. Each of our schools apply for community grants, and so they would certainly be doing some of that, but one of the issues with their original budget was it was based on soft money that they had hoped to raise, where now it's not. It's based on, it's based on the $250,000 startup grant that would come in year one that would help them have the foundation. So yes, they would be, I'm sure, raising money for actions that they'd like to do with their students, as would any of our schools.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions. I think this is an exciting opportunity for the district, but it is something that we want to proceed with caution, and I think we've given it fidelity over the last couple of months, and trying to get it across the finish line here. A couple of questions, Jackie, from your perspective, and Dan, from your perspective, do you think the timetable that we have of August 25th is appropriate? What I've seen over the last couple of months is a give and take, and I think both sides have been really flexible in trying to move this ahead, and I think we've shown some good collaboration. At the same time, we've extended deadlines. We've on our side, they on their side in terms of the start date. I guess I don't want to go down that slippery slope again, that August 25th comes and goes, and then we extend it to October 1st, then we extend it to November 1st. So I'd like to really have a clear deadline, and if things are in place, great, it's realistic. If not, then we're another year out potentially, and that that communication on both sides occurs early on. So all of a sudden, that 9R isn't necessarily the bad person if these individual, if requests aren't made by that appropriate deadline. So I guess from your perspective of knowing that fine-tuning that needs to happen with the PD, the tech plan, and the staffing, and then probably the larger concern is with budget, is that August deadline realistic, to have everything squared away 100%?
I think I was very comfortable with a June deadline, to be honest with you. I think the budget was a major piece, and that's been addressed. The other pieces are really flushing out further, and so I really think August is very realistic, because it does provide the summer break if we need it. I think more realistically, we can finish the modifications that are necessary and bring them back to you in a contract even before the end of June. So August, I think, gives us that padding, should there be need, that's why we worded it, not later than August 25th, because I think Juniper would also like to wrap that up and to be able to really put their focus on their planning aspects. So I don't, I think August 25th is very realistic.
Right, and considering the work that they've already begun on their professional development plan, their tech plan, the curriculum resources that they've already identified, I do also think that we won't go beyond August 25th, and I would be cautiously optimistic to have it completed by June as well.
Got you, great. And then can you two remind me on the amount of cash in hand they have to have to start, and then what are the reserves that they need to have, and are you seeing that with their budgets?
They're required the same as we are, 3% table reserves, and they've met that within their budget. The cash on hand, obviously, is the startup grant is going to be the critical part, as Jackie said, nothing is guaranteed, but certainly an approved charter in the state of Colorado, there's, I don't know of an instance where a startup grant wasn't extended to a charter that had board approval, so I'm very confident in that. Obviously, if something happened, then their board would need to reevaluate whether they felt comfortable with still moving forward, or have they actually raised the soft money that they originally intended to. I think their concern last time was, will anyone give them money for a school that's yet to be approved? And so I certainly have no doubt this group is still going to probably go after some donations to give them a really solid foundation. So if something were to happen with startup grant, I think that's likely their fallback, but cash in the bank is certainly something they also know they want to have, and cash flow is something that we're working with them on. We do a cash flow loan through the state, and so we'd want to work very closely with them to make sure that we could cover needs for them during those cycles where dollars aren't being forwarded from the state in a timely manner.
Great, thanks. And then a question for Tammy or one of the other leaders, if you could just briefly... you could just briefly, uh, address the, uh, public announcement that Mountain made that they're going to grow down to third to fifth grade. Do you see that impacting your enrollment patterns or staffing patterns at all? And what we're, what we're...
Well, I don't think we've had, I mean, even more for a year opening with 150 students and pull up 161. And I think that there will be any competition there if you will in terms of that regard. We're, we're choice. They're a private-based school, and again, it would be another great option. It would be a different curriculum, if not construction that we would provide. And no, I really don't see that being an issue at all, especially with us, you know, with K through five, you know, some of our biggest needs are coming in in the K-1 and 2 grades as opposed to the K-4 and 5, where those kids seem to be pretty settled in our whole school.
Great. Okay.
Cap, what she said, because I didn't hear very much. Thank you.
Uh, in, um, last week, Mountain made a decision to grow down, I think, grades 3, 4, and 5. So Tammy Fraley responded by saying, there's enough interest that's already been established by community members. And correct me if I'm mistaking you here or misquoting you here. And certainly because it's not just grades 3 through 5, but it's a, um, an entire spectrum of elementary, that there's enough interest of people that would want that over Mountain. So between the interest that's been generated and then the holistic uh, offerings, uh, there's not a concern. Is that accurate statement?
Great.
Uh, and then one, I guess, fundamental question that Kim's alluded to in previous meetings. And I think this, in my mind, equates to those quality forums of what we're trying to do to 9R, making sure that we're offering an appropriate curriculum that might be changing and adapting. So just using opportunities to get a pulse on the community. And that was, hopefully, what we can do with the community forum with parents and community members on what are those expectations? What are the desires and hopes of, of parents to meet the needs of the students, uh, in the 21st century here? And I'm not saying something as provocative as that one of our curriculums needs to be replaced or not, but just constantly getting that feedback loop on what the expectation of our community is. And, uh, I'm all for choice, but in a certain way, does that mean that we fail to listen to the community and be responsive? So, community members have taken their passion and vision in moving forward. Is that part of our expectation? And we should be ahead of that. And it's a perfect public school system where no charters exist because we're uber-responsive to the needs of the community. And that's not an anti-charter statement, but it's really kind of keeping our minds and our ears close to the expectation of the community. So, um, trying to use our community fora and then other opportunities to hear from the community members on what those changing expectations are. I think that certainly will become important with that exit strategy for grade 6, for kids that will graduate from Juniper if it is approved. Um, what, what possibilities make sense for them? Is that a new charter school that the district will approve? Is the EL program or the IB program an appropriate curriculum? Uh, we need to be one or two steps ahead of that conversation. So just a kind of a broad conversation that I think we want to keep in the forefront of our minds. But thanks for your time and everybody's thoughts.
I have a few questions and then an opinion or something. Um, my first question is, what sort of oversight, we, we approve the charter, we sign a contract, and at what point, at that point, what's our oversight responsibility since we are, have signed a contract?
Right, right. We, you still are a school board. They are a 9R school. Um, they, they will make fiduciary responsibilities for their organization. However, you still have responsibilities as a school board to ensure performance, to ensure accountability. Um, and so, just like our schools present to you, we would, we would be inviting Juniper School to come and share their outcomes, to share their work. Um, so it would be another school in the district. Um, the autonomy they achieve as a charter school is that, that, that there are some state laws that they are exempted from as a charter school. Um, and therefore, there are some, some things that they can do differently, um, that we don't have the ability to waive. And so, um, that, that, that gives them some, some additional wiggle room. But we still have oversight and, and responsibility to ensure that they're a quality school, that they're fiscally sound. Um, you would be receiving their financial audits to make sure that they are, in fact, managing their finances so that, uh, it doesn't become a burden on, on the district and the taxpayers of, of La Plata County. So, um, we still have the fiduciary responsibility of oversight, uh, but we have a partner and a board that, that will assume a lot of that day-to-day responsibility and then report to you, just like my team reports to you and our principals report to you on their academic performance.
Okay.
They actually, Mick, in addition to that, they have, um, performance standards outlined in their application that will become part of the, um, part of the contract. And so they will have to monitor their performance with respect to those performance standards that have been identified.
Okay, thank you. The second question, or actually, it's a two, two pieces of the same question. Does the applicant, does the approval of the resolution start flowing any dollars to them?
No.
Okay.
No. It, it certainly makes them eligible to, to, to make application for the startup grant. Actually, you don't have to necessarily have an approved charter. You can be in the process. Um, but it certainly helps. It gives the state the confidence that, in fact, they, they have approval to operate. Um, and it gives them the ability to go to their, to their soft fundraisers, uh, fund, funders and begin to secure dollars. So there are no dollars that would flow until students arrived in their building.
Okay. And then the third is, um, how do you see this, um, fitting into your budget modeling schedules for, in the, you know, next year, the following year?
I think one of the, the nice things that they've done for us is they have taken enrollment. And, and we've encouraged that they continue to do so because it will be helpful for us to know where are we creating capacity within the district. If, if, if 15 students are coming from Needham, we know that, that this past year, we've had to turn away choice applications from Needham. Um, so it, it, it will potentially allow us to reopen some spaces within our in-town schools, uh, that we've had to begin closing because we have no space available for students who have, have desired to come into town. So, um, it will have an impact. There's no question. But, but I think that the goal is having this much time to work together and plan together. We're going to know where the impact is and be able to make appropriate adjustments to our expenditures, um, to address the budget issue.
Yeah, and I was just wanting to get this, how you schedule the actual planning of that. I think you answered that.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, um, those were pretty much my questions. I, you know, I, since the, um, I saw the DAC report, and on, on the 10th of March, I had serious concerns that I was trying to figure out how we mitigate. Um, I am very comforted by what I heard from Dr. Stubbs. And, uh, you know, so I, I feel a lot better of it. Before that, the person on my left had, you know, a big chunk of my, uh, attention span. Um, one of the things that I, I get a lot of comfort about going, proceeding with this is the idea that we are doing a resolution to negotiate a contract. And the contract is, to me, the key thing. Um, the, you know, and I'm, in, in a previous career, I, and I got out of it for partly this reason, is, you know, you would select somebody, you would go down a path with them. It would have a number of criteria, and then, you know, it, I, I'm completely okay if we don't meet the criteria to drop it on the 25th and then start the process over. But that this, I like that this gives us the path to get there to a contract thing when we do start making the true commitment. So I'm, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with this right now.
Let me first say, I'm sorry I bit off your ear.
Because...
You didn't bite it off, you're just chewing. I... It's good, I listened. My concern is not the curriculum. It's not the, uh, the idea behind it. It's more the process that's going on and the rush to it, as far as I'm concerned, because it doesn't have to happen. Um, you can come back and reapply in August and accomplish the same thing with more. But I do have a few questions. Maybe it'll change my mind. I don't know. Um, so is it fair to assume, Jackie, that the DAC committee that was put together that reviewed the first two or three did not review this?
That is correct. They've not reviewed the new...
So they didn't, so they aren't coming forward with a solidified, um, recommendation either way? What we're hearing is based upon yours and Dan's and, and Dr. Stubbs?
She's got the title.
Working with them to bring it up. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, explain to me the difference between a master teacher and a lead teacher?
I'm gonna let, I'm gonna defer to Katie or Tammy.
So, a math...
Yeah, come on up.
Before I answer that, thank you for your deep conversation and discussion up here. It's refreshing. Um, so the difference between a master teacher and a lead teacher, so what the Juniper School is looking at, three teachers per two classrooms. In those classrooms, on a daily basis, the lead teacher will be leading that instruction. The master teacher will be the third teacher. They will hold higher qualifications and areas of expertise than the lead teacher. That master teacher will really be the owner and the holder of that curriculum and the assessments, although it is a co-teaching model. So those three teachers will work very closely to monitor, assess, and instruct the children in both classrooms.
So if I understand your answer, the master teacher's credentials are more than the lead teacher?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
And then you have a professional development plan that states it will start in January of 2016?
Mm-hmm.
Or 2015?
2016.
2016.
Mm-hmm.
And you will identify those teachers at sometime within that time. I'm not trying to put a date on it.
Right. So the, the revised timeline that we submitted, um, to you all in this, um, in this, uh, agenda item, um, shows that we are looking at, and we're having the conversation about doing some advanced contracting and getting our staff hired before the first of the year so that we can fulfill our commitment to start a professional development. Um, and we provided that professional development plan. Um, so really looking at providing pretty intensive upfront training for the master teachers and then breaking it out for the whole staff, um, special staff, and then exceptional student services as well.
So the idea is to...
Intimate.
And I assume you're going to do this if you get your grant.
Correct.
That's what all this is based on.
Correct. Mm-hmm.
Uh, and that's fair. I don't know. Um, so you get these, and you're going to hire these master teachers or lead teachers to come into town or from town, or where, I don't know where you're going to get them, and have professional development eight to 10 days, six days, whatever it was, over the course of six months?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and pay them a regular salary plus their professional development?
No, we will not begin their contract pay until their contracts actually start July 1st of 2016. We will provide them a stipend, which is comparable, I think 9R does $41 an hour. We're going to do $40 an hour, just to keep it simpler.
No, I, I understand the stipend.
So we're gonna, yeah, so we're gonna stipend for their, um, professional development that will begin before their contract time. After their contract starts July 1, um, part of their professional development is part of their contract.
Okay. I, I guess I'm not seeing where these teachers are going to come from unless they come from our staff and they currently live here, because they're not going to be able to live on $40 a day's professional development.
Well, I, I think Durango in itself attracts many types of people. I think there's a lot of people living in Durango that don't currently hold teaching positions, but they have the expertise to do so. Um, we're looking, and we've kind of talked about this before, we're really looking at casting a wide net for recruitment. We have Colorado, um, through the league. We have support and advertising through, um, the league to recruit staff. We have, um, you know, nationwide options as well as local options. So, um, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna put out our job specs. And I think staffing is not going to be, um, one of our areas of concern. I think we're going to have, you know, more than enough qualified, um, interested individuals that we're going to be able to be very specific in our master and lead teachers and what they'll provide for Juniper students.
Um, thank you. Um, Dan, tell me about the 3%.
Mm-hmm.
That, I assume it's 3% of their overall budget?
Yeah, 3% of the overall budget is, is typically a holdback, and that's to cover district services that we would agree on through the contract phase. So it's not just 3% we get to keep. It's 3% we would document how that is supporting their vision. Typically, there's oversight. Jackie, as, as our student services chief advocacy officer, um, would have time that she would need to spend in supporting, uh, the effort of this school, like she does every other school. So there would be a portion of that time financed, any time that finance would support them. So we would have to document for them what that 3% would actually equate to, in, in addition to other services they may want from us. They may want us to, to help them with payroll. They may want us to help them with accounts payable or accounts receivable. Those are all things that we have to still discuss. Um, but, but the 3% is a set aside, recognizing that there are some services that typically a district or an authorizer provides. 3% is what Colorado Charter School Institute withholds. Um, and they also have a responsibility to document how they use those dollars to actually support the school. Um, so it could be more than 3%. Some of the other budget line items may be things that actually become district-funded activities. Um, but again, until we start then negotiations, we're not going to know exactly what services we want to jointly use.
But I guess my question is, is it 3% of their overall budget?
3% of their...
Can be used for these services?
Correct. 3% or more. 3% is, is a minimum that we've elected to pending the negotiation of the contract. Um, so it could be more.
And 3% of, if I recall right, I think I was looking at somewhere around $2 million?
I believe, I believe.
Is that correct? It varied from a little over $2 million to maybe 1, 1.8? Did I see that in the budget?
I think it was less than $2 million.
It was 1.8 maybe?
You're talking about 80% PPR holdback?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm trying to figure out what 3% of that is.
3% of PPR? 50,000, I believe.
So with $50,000, we're going to be able to cover transportation, all the meals, all the custodial, all those things?
No, custodial services are, are a separate line item in there. That, that's in their budget, um, to, to contribute towards the shared model that we have right now over at Big Picture. So that's in addition to the 3%.
But the contingency budget scratches all that, the money for building and everything?
I know. I didn't see that.
Well, I could be wrong. I just want to make sure I'm right.
Yeah.
So on the regular budget, it says rental and land building, year two, 250,000, 83,000, four, or three, four, and five. But in the contingency budget, there's nothing budgeted for it at all because it's assumed that the, they'll use our, our building. Is that correct?
Right.
Yeah. We put in that if our numbers fall, we wind up with, instead of an existential shortcoming, that we would request that we use a different facility, which would be the cost of custodial and maintenance, which would be a much lesser cost.
Yeah, we, we cannot charge rent, um, to a charter school if we have an available building.
I understand. I'm just trying to clarify what I think I saw.
Sure, sure.
And I, I think I'm getting the clarification.
Don't push Jackie off.
Um, I, pardon me, but I, I'm, I'm trying to read my notes.
Sure.
Um, so the food service, they're gonna use our food service?
Yeah.
Like over with Big Picture School, basically?
Correct. We currently are serving, yeah, we're currently serving, um, food over there in that building. So they would, we would extend that to, to Juniper School.
And that would be part of that 3%? Or that would be additional by, by students? Or you don't know?
It's additional budgeted.
It's a separate budget line item on there. About 9,000, I believe, is the cost of that.
Yeah.
9,000 for meals for 240 kids?
Yeah, because it's in addition to the free and reduced lunch application process.
So offset a little?
Right. So what they would do similarly, we, we use general fund dollars to offset our food service. They would proportionally share in the additional expense of our food service program that does not come in from federal dollars.
Okay. Um, so you mentioned in here that the property at the Cowboy Church is selling for 995,000 approximately?
Yes, correct.
Do you have a contract with them?
No, we do not.
Do you have any idea that they're willing to do what you're doing?
Yes, we do.
How secure are you with that?
We haven't really explored it that strongly, quite honestly, until we had an approved application to have really serious conversations. It seemed to be a little...
Because I have information that would lead me to believe that they are in negotiations with another group.
They are. And when we spoke with them, and when we spoke with them...
And it's very close.
When we spoke with them in December, we toured the facility twice, and we actually held one of our board meetings there. Um, they were very accommodating, and they wanted us to actually put in a backup offer to the offer... the offer you're speaking to, and we were not comfortable doing that. We didn't think it was very financially sound when we had no money. So, we put them off until January, and they really needed a decision, and we said, "We're not ready to." They said the current contract they had, there was many areas that they were working through, and they would let us know when it, if it did not, you know...
So, you don't know anything about it, whether you're going to get it?
Right. Their initial year would be within the Big Picture building, that's established, it's beyond their charter application, they're required to present what would be available now. It's hard to predict two years down the road what would be, but it's a piece of property that would meet their needs.
Right, I mean, the fallback is the big picture.
Correct.
I understand.
Correct.
The $70,000K that you pledged, that you have here that says you...
Yes.
That's soft money, is it not?
That's soft money, correct.
It's not included in the budget.
It's not included in the budget.
But, I thought I heard you say that maybe there wasn't any right now, but maybe I'm misunderstanding.
We just didn't include it in the budget, but we do have some.
And, but, the grant isn't included in the budget?
The grant is included in the budget, correct.
Okay. And it's a perspective, then?
It's a likely.
It's a low chance.
To your knowledge, nobody's ever been denied.
Correct.
Okay. Once again, I apologize, but I want to make sure I touch the bases. So, tell me about this repairs and maintenance services. I mean, you give a 190 square foot. What would that be for if they're using our facility?
Jason, you want to address that? That's maintenance cost.
$1.90 per square foot for 8,000 square feet, that's estimated to be offered to them over at Big Picture.
Yeah, but what, why are we...
Because we cannot charge, right?
So, you're going to charge them a maintenance fee?
We can provide or charge a maintenance fee for the upkeep of that building, for the custodial and maintenance charges and whatnot. It's another way to...
Yeah, that's kind of going along.
Yeah.
I got it, I got it, I got it.
Acceptance.
So, um...
I'll take it out.
Why, what, looking at your curriculum, these are just some clarifying questions for me. You have a lot of asterisks on here, what are those asterisks?
I don't know what you're supposed, what are you supposed to...
Well, you just have asterisks near these curriculum things, and I can't see anything that it would lead to.
Intervention?
Or in Gilliamham, and then you have an asterisk, and then you have...
Oh, oh, sure.
What are the, what does that mean?
So, those are some additional Tier 2 and Tier 3 intervention programs that most, majority of teachers that hold a special ed qualification or certification possess those curriculum materials, and so we are, we're confident that the teachers we hire will actually have those. So, those are not, and those are at a zero cost, because the teachers will be bringing those materials with them. That's why there's an asterisk, which...
So, the asterisks indicating what? Just tell me.
Well, there's a footnote, that actually did not print very well, did it? It should be on a, like a landscape, but there is a footnote that relates to the asterisks that explains that, that the asterisk is no cost.
And is that the one that says program available through personal ownership?
Correct.
So, you're going to hire teachers that already have these programs in their possession? Is that the idea?
Mm-hmm. It's very common.
Don't fall asleep on me, Ian. I'm, I have several more, but unfinished, I think.
So, any thoughts from a student perspective about the charter school?
I think it would be great to have a sort of option for students, especially since we have an option like that for all the other grades, but as brought up, there are some other little details that are challenging to deal with, so...
Go through, do we want to continue the conversation?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
I don't want to sound like a cheerleader. I, when I was on the DAC committee, went through it with a fine-tooth comb, looked at every aspect, I agreed with the DAC committee that this was not an application we wanted to put forth. It was with a great deal of studying, a great deal of meeting, considering, listening to the opposition, that I found that I was moved to the other side, that I felt like that for factual reasons that they were ready. I think that we are in need of choices for the community, not for 9R, but I think it's cool that, cool?
Cool or cruel?
Cool.
I'm taking on the...
I really like the idea that they're applying to be part of our system, and that we will be collaborators, we will benefit from each other's strengths, and we can help each other with our weaknesses. If I could find a really good, solid negative, I would definitely express that, and I would not be leaning towards approving this, but I think, considering that choice is a good thing, that in order to deny it, we have to have solid reasons to say no. Thank you.
Stephanie?
I'm also comforted with, when I vote, as I will tonight, that until we get a contract, and when we get a contract, you need to meet all of its criteria, so...
Craig?
I wanted to be clear that it's, once again, I'm not concerned about the curriculum per se, it's the process and where we're going with this. If this was August, and we had all of our questions answered, you would have my 100% support. I'm not against the charter school. But, where is a list, or do we have a list, of the contingencies that are being expected of this group?
It's in your resolution.
Well, it just lists technology plan, I mean, is that...
Those relate specifically to elements of the rubric that we used, and so as we work through those particular things, we would rescore the rubric to ensure that we covered the areas that we felt like were lacking.
Okay. Through that highlighted area of the rubric that was...
Correct.
Okay. And the other thing is, going back to Nancy's comment, it is not my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that we have to have a solid reason for not approving the application. It's for the charter, is that correct?
You would have to state a reason, because any denial of a charter is appealable, and so you would have to state your grounds for denial.
For the charter, I'm talking, because we're voting on the application.
Right.
That's what...
Correct.
That's what I'm speaking to.
Okay, right. So, you would need to, you would need to state a specific reason as to why you were denying, and it would need to be one of those reasons in statute.
Okay. Let's keep the...
You had a comment? Okay. Great, any other comments?
I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page in the room regarding the mill levy dollars. The mill levy dollars is an appropriation that's identified in here to be shared with them. It's not a required contribution, but it is a contribution that would be made to them and would lessen the revenue available for 9R schools. So, I just want to make sure everybody in the room is aware that, you know, in the first year, it's projected at $170,000. In the second year, it's projected at about, you know, $250,000. So, those would be monies that we would have to budget out of 9R's expected expenditure. So, I just want to make sure that the public knows that, and...
Correct.
People present, and then the board knows that as well. So, those would be monies that we would be budgeting out of either building budgets, salary budgets, and so on and so forth for 9R in the future.
So, if I understand you correctly, what you're saying is monies coming out of the mill levy is contingent upon board approval, which, because they have to approve the budget?
That is contingent upon the board's desire to fund that piece of this, or share those dollars with us.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We have to approve sharing mill levy money with any charter school if we had more.
Correct. Statute leaves that to the school board.
Right, that's what I want.
Because those are monies that have been...
I just want to make sure I heard...
Right, the taxpayers approved in the past.
In plain language.
Those circumstances at that time.
And that expectation is reflected in this budget?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
In the proposed budget.
Yep. And do we have an idea of how to make up that $250,000 that will be?
Of 3A dollars, which is 3.2 million of the 5.6 total mill levy, they have outlined in their budget how they will meet those expectations that taxpayers voted on, recruitment and retention of staff, innovative programs, technology...
Small class size.
Small class size. So, they've met those criteria within their application.
I'm talking about us.
Yeah.
How we'll...
Yeah. Same thing we do anytime we lose dollars, is we obviously have to make decisions about it. We would be losing the students as well, so therefore, the expenditures that typically would be associated with those students would go also to Juniper School. Sarah, let's call the vote, please.
Andy Burns.
Aye.
Kim Martin.
Aye.
Stephanie Moran.
Aye.
Mick Souter.
Aye.
Greg Spradling.
Aye.
Nancy Stubbs.
Aye.
Motion passes, and I'd say, let's just read the resolution into the record. Resolution, providing conditional approval for Durango Schools of Choice/Juniper School application, whereas Durango Schools of Choice originally submitted an application review on October 1, 2014, proposing an opening of a K-12 elementary school based on a Montessori and inquiry-based learning and project-based learning blended model, and whereas the district has worked closely with the Board of Directors of Durango School of Choice on three formal reviews conducted by Durango School District 9R's DAC, with major improvement and effort noted each time, and whereas the Board of Durango School of Choice had presented over 160 student enrollment showing strong interest for the proposal during the public hearing on March 10, 2015, and whereas the final review by the 9R DAC Charter Review Committee found areas that require additional development, specifically in the area of budget, detailed technology plan, professional development plan, and alignment of staffing plan across the entire charter, and whereas the board of Durango Schools of Choice is committed to address the areas outlined above prior to contract approval, and whereas the Board of Durango Schools of Choice have formally modified their charter to propose an opening of August 2016 instead of the target date of 2015, providing additional time for staff identification, development of their curriculum model, and training of staff, and whereas the Board of Durango Schools of Choice have provided a revised budget and cash flow plan that addresses the areas of concern identified and now reflects the Colorado Charter School startup grant, providing a solid financial foundation for its initial formative years, and whereas the school district continues to collaborate with the founders of Durango Schools of Choice and the Juniper School to ensure that it will open on a solid foundation and provide sustainable options for students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade beginning in 2016, be it resolved that the school board of Durango School District 9R hereby passes this resolution, providing conditional approval of the charter application, and looks forward to collaborating with the founders, as final areas identified in development are addressed through the contract negotiations process to be completed no later than August 25, 2015. We wish you the best of luck.
I have a secondary...
We've turned your make-up.
Not the first time. To meet the contract, I'm making, I move that we put together a major, or an ad hoc committee that creates a checklist and has at least two board members review the list and report whether the criteria are met when we approve the contract. Composition of the ad hoc committee to be determined at the April 14 work session.
So, I think that's a good plan, just have that timeline in place. Did everybody hear Mick's comments there?
Was that a comment? I thought you made a motion.
It was a motion to have...
My second.
Mick would do be so kind as to repeat that.
I was afraid of that.
Write it down.
I move that we put together an ad hoc committee that contains at least two board members that creates a checklist and reviews the list and reports back to the board whether criteria are met when we approve, the criteria for contract approval are met when we approve the contract, at the time we approve the contract. Composition of the ad hoc committee to be determined at the April 14 work session. If I do it again, it'll be different one more time.
Should I repeat my second? Second.
So, this is a motion on the table, continuing the conversation with 9As, I think it fits within it, but there's a motion to just really concretely spell out that timeframe with board input, and I think that's a good idea.
I was wondering what the next step is, how we get to the contract?
Great, wonderful. Sarah?
Andy Burns.
Aye.
Kim Martin.
Aye.
Stephanie Moran.
Aye.
Mick Souter.
Aye.
Greg Spradling.
Aye.
Nancy Stubbs.
Aye.
Good catch. 9B, the revised 2014-15 board calendar. We've had to change some meetings around because everyone's out on April 28. So, we're moving that second April meeting to May 5. Everything else is business as usual. May 5.
The revised 2014-15 board meeting calendar be approved as presented?
We need a second to discuss.
Did you, do you see what I see?
Yeah, yeah.
It's not on here, May 5.
It's not, it's, the one attached is not the revised one, but that is a change that you just spoke about. It's moving it from, moving the board meeting from April 28 to May 5 would be the official second board meeting in April.
I am.
It is. Okay. Order Mexican. Do we have a second?
I'm sorry. Second.
Stephanie made the motion, and Dr. Stubbs seconded.
She's backed the nation.
She's been downgraded. So, the attached version doesn't reflect this, but the comments reflect that the second April meeting is now being moved to April 5. I'm sorry, May 5. Sarah?
Andy Burns.
Aye.
Kim Martin.
Aye.
Stephanie Moran.
Aye.
Mick Souter.
Aye.
Greg Spradling.
Aye.
Nancy Stubbs.
Aye.
Moving on to 9C, just discussing the community forum that we had with teachers. I think we had about 10 teachers show up and some administrators as well, so we appreciate people taking time out on St. Patty's Day to celebrate with us and to discuss quality indicators for our district. Just a quick reflection upon that, since we haven't had a chance to discuss it, and then moving forward to the April 7 forum, also on quality, that will be held with community members and parents. I think two, one or two board members had agreed to look at variations of questions building upon what we had discussed with the teachers and administrators, but that some of those questions might be a little different, so I forget off the top of my head who are our volunteers for that, but curious if we have any progress.
Was it me?
I'm so sorry.
Well, I'll do it.
Okay. So, let's first look at the session that we had with teachers and district staff, just kind of thoughts, reflections.
One thing I heard very, very clearly was, when you define a successful student, it's more than academics, that we really need to be tracking, accounting for the whole student, not just the academic side of the student. But, I was thinking about that, and it's been a long time since I read the curriculum, but people and the administrators, don't the standards include things like being, you know, being inquisitive, being part of things, contributing, and things like that? So, maybe it's just that we need to emphasize that more when we talk about our expectations of students, because I think... Because I think, I think it's there, but maybe we aren't, as a board, I know you do, maybe we aren't focusing on those standards as much as we are just on the testing of the academics.
The chieftains have the floor. Sorry about that. I noticed it was on, and I was trying to turn it off.
One of the things to that point is we have been trying to beef that up, we have been trying to beef that up over the last year or so. So the policy regarding, you know, the personal skills and 21st century learning skills that are beyond that, we at least have addressed it. I think there's still a lot more work on it as a board, but we have started that process to make it more than just a little bit in one policy that we're trying to flush it out.
Maybe it's just not well-known in the, with the teachers and administrators.
It's still based on observation more than anything else right now.
And that's appropriate, I think. It's just that I don't know that the staff and faculty are aware that we are concerned about those things as well as the academic testing. So maybe it's a matter of communication.
Dan, when will the TEL survey results be tabulated and available to districts?
Should have that. I'm just reading an email from Gretchen. She's obviously busy over there. That we had 90% participation in the district, which is outstanding, so I believe probably three, three more weeks.
Three more or four more weeks. I've got to touch the city. We were one of the highest again in the state. Thank you to everyone, all of our administrators and our staff. We had six buildings 100%. Everybody over 80%, so it was fabulous. Results should be here in, my guess is, four weeks. And I'll be sure to let you know, they're coming out with heat graphs and colors and all kinds of new ways to look at the data, so it's easier to disseminate. Thank you, Brad.
Other reflections on remaining two weeks ago?
No, just that I noticed we missed a category.
Outcomes?
Yeah. Quality outcomes.
Yeah.
Because it was in the advertisement the next day that we were talking about that, so.
So won't incorporate that in the...
You have quality outcomes in your...
Session.
I thought you woven in though, Mick. I noticed that when you, with your questions, it seemed like you had woven it into, thought that was intentional.
Nope.
So would we want to do something similar to what we did with the district staff? Try to get the list of questions out maybe by Monday or Friday, if that's possible? I know that's quick. And then maybe meet for 30 minutes prior to the meeting, as we did, and just go over those and discuss our roles and responsibilities? Would everybody be, so are we slated for 5:00 or 5:30?
Slated for 5:00.
Here.
So we would need 4:30 here.
Wouldn't people be able to meet at 4:30 here? On, this is the 7th.
7th.
One thing I noticed when I started looking at them was, if you're wording it for parents, it's a little bit, if it's for community, you know, are we, what am I, the way you word the questions can be different for parents and non-parents. And so this is community, which should include both. So, Kim, maybe we should get together and see if there's a middle way, or if, we may need to state it two ways, or there may be a way to figure it out. But like, you know, some of the questions were quite specific, and community members may not be aware. So, Kim, we got our word cut out.
Then, Dan, do you have any anticipation of who might show up? Do you think it's just going to be parents, or are we doing ads in the paper that a community member, non-parent, would hear?
I think we've done some promotion, we're doing a lot more promotion this week, using the paper and other media sources, so I would say there could be a mix. I've reached out to a number of non-parents who are very active in the educational community and encourage them to come. So I do think we'll have a mix of both parents and non-parents.
So it's important to keep that in mind when they're developing the questions, so. Okay. You guys think Monday is realistic?
Sure. Let's check in Monday.
Anything Wednesday by 7:00 AM is realistic?
And come up with a time?
Yep.
Okay.
And answer some.
We'll move on to item 10, monitoring. 10A, this has been postponed till our April 14th meeting. 10B, the BSR 01, Board Superintendent Roles and Responsibilities.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Am I, we're waiting for more information to come in? Is that, is that the problem?
I defined what I sent Andy, but I couldn't find it in time for us to include it tonight.
Okay. So all we got is just...
Two individuals had provided some documents, so.
But we only got one of them?
The second one may have been posted this afternoon, so, yeah.
Okay. Where is it posted?
In Board Docs.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Ready for a motion?
Yeah, for 10B.
I move that the BSR 01 Board Superintendent Roles and Responsibilities Monitoring Report is in compliance with noted exceptions.
A second to continue the conversation, please?
All second.
So, looks like the areas in concern, focus on 1.1, and just really trying to formulate the thumbs up, thumbs down, and when that approach is taken, that we're noting it into the record, and we discussed kind of an action plan early on at last, our last meeting, that we'd have Sarah reflect this thumbs up, thumbs down conversations in the minutes of the meeting, just to jog our memory. So that was one area that we felt that we were out of compliance, or in compliance with noted exception. The second area is 1.3. And that's just making sure that we follow appropriate protocol when superintendent feels a request is out of line. I think we found out with BC 05 that we really didn't have an appropriate protocol in place. So that's part of the areas to be remediated, is that we have structures in place when the superintendent is concerned about requests that might be unreasonable. And so that will be part of our action plan, and I think we discussed cleaning that language up to create clear expectations for all of us, not only for the board, but also for Dan as well. Then there's more concern about 1.4, specifically looking at trying to focus on policy, not day-to-day operations. And you see the comments there. So that's just a brief disjointed summary. Any questions or comments from board members? So tonight we'll vote on it, and then at our next meeting, that would be our work session for April, we'll discuss making changes to next year, and then any sort of action plan to remediate our efforts. So like we did this time, individuals can get their action plan items to me by this Friday, and I'll send a reminder, or we've got some time. I'll send that reminder out. One thing I've noticed with emails coming to me, and I think this is difficult with just kind of auto-population of kind of emails, I'm getting emails from board members to my Fort Lewis account, my 9R account, and my Yahoo account. So trying to make sure that I'm corralling everybody together, I think I mixed, missed Mick's comments, even though his were sent to the right location, but I'm getting them to all areas. But I know when you just type in somebody's name, that email pops up. So let's just try to be mindful of sending things to everybody's 9R account. So if I miss anything, I'm just trying to go through three separate emails to find those emails. But any comments about BSR 01?
We don't allow any servers in your home. Sorry.
Okay. Sarah?
Andy Burns.
Aye.
Kim Martin.
Aye.
Stephanie Moran.
Aye.
Mick Souter.
Aye.
Greg Spradling.
Aye.
Nancy Stubbs.
Aye.
10C, Monitoring Report, RP 1, ART.
I move that the board approves RP 01 art indicators as presented.
And I don't think there's a disposition in there, so we'll need to make one. And I think our thought was...
Interpretation's accepted.
Interpretation's accepted. So if you want to amend your motion to just say...
Interpretation's accepted.
Yeah. Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Kind of baseline, date of year, if you can even call it that, so. Great. Straightforward. Sarah?
Andy Burns.
Aye.
Kim Martin.
Aye.
Stephanie Moran.
Aye.
Mick Souter.
Aye.
Greg Spradling.
Aye.
Nancy Stubbs.
Aye.
Items 11 and 12, the superintendent's consent agenda and the board's consent agenda. If I could have one motion to cover both, please?
I move that we approve the items in the superintendent's consent agenda and the board's consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Sarah?
Andy Burns.
Aye.
Kim Martin.
Aye.
Stephanie Moran.
Aye.
Mick Souter.
Aye.
Greg Spradling.
Aye.
Nancy Stubbs.
Aye.
Item 13, new business. Any items to be discussed?
Andy, I'm willing to, if you give me the documents to consolidate it into one document, and if it looks like there's agreement, I'll try to put an agreement. If there's disagreement, I'll just call both, I'll call both parts out. So if Nancy and I disagree, for example, I'll just call out the two, so we see if an action plan, which direction to go.
So you're talking about BC 05?
Yeah.
That would be great. I appreciate that, so. So he'll take the comments, and I can pass those on to him to collate and try to make sense of agreeing and...
That'd be helpful.
Where possible.
We trust you.
Any new business items? Great. Debrief, self-assessment. I thought we had a pretty detailed, thoughtful conversation about Juniper School. I think we showed, you know, that we're taking it very responsibly, handling it with fidelity. I thought there's some really good questions. Motion to adjourn.
I move that we...
We can stay here.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Sarah?
Andy Burns.
Aye.
Kim Martin.
Aye.
Stephanie Moran.
Aye.
Mick Souter.
Aye.
Greg Spradling.
Aye.
Nancy Stubbs.
Aye.